Yes, we can hear you Supervisor.
All right, this is County Council and CEO.
Thank you Fisha, we can hear you.
Okay.
Celia, I'm here Supervisor Solis.
Thank you Supervisor, we can hear you. We saw. Hi Supervisor Kuhl.
Yeah, it kept saying the meeting has not yet started, please wait, so I couldn't get in.
Okay, you're connected now and you're live, and I'm gonna unmute your line, and you have the ability to mute and un-mute on your own.
All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, good morning everyone, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. Our meeting today is being held remotely due to the current public health crisis to protect the health of all. I will now take roll call to confirm attendance. Please unmute your mic and respond when your name is called. Supervisor Solis?
Present.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas? Supervisor Kuhl?
Here.
Supervisor Han?
I'm here.
Azia Davenport, Acting Chief Executive Officer?
Present.
Rodrigo Castro Silva, Acting County Council?
Here.
Celia Zavala, Executive Officer of the Board?
Here.
As indicated on the posted agenda, we will be taking telephonic public comments separately for regularly agenda items and public hearing items during today's meeting. The Executive Office of the Board received over eighty-nine hundred written public comments for today's meeting, and as those written comments were received, all of them were available to the Supervisors for their consideration, consistent with the Brown Act's requirements. We will continue to receive written public comments throughout the meeting. Due to the number of written public comments received, we will not be reading all the names. However, these comments will be part of the official record. Madam Executive Officer, please call the agenda.
Good morning Madam Chair and members of the Board. Today's agenda will begin on page two, Set Matter, 10:30. This item will be held for discussion. Item S1 is a discussion of the Public Health Order related to COVID-19 as requested by the Chair of the Board. On page three, Special District Agendas, this is the agenda for the Los Angeles County Development Authority. On page five, this is the agenda for the Regional Park and Open Space District. On page six, Consent Calendar, Board of Supervisors, Items 1 through 28. On item two, this includes a substitution motion as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On item three, Supervisor Han requested this item be held. On item six, Supervisor Barker requested this item be held. This item relates to item fifty-five. On item ten, Supervisor Solis requested this item be held. On item fourteen, Supervisor Solis requested this item be held. This is revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On item seventeen, sixteen, Supervisor Ridley Thomas requested this item be held. On item twenty-three, Supervisor Kuhl requested this item be held. This includes revision and consideration of amendment by Supervisor Ridley Thomas as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On items twenty-four and twenty-five, Supervisor Kuhl requested these items be held. On page twenty-five, Administrative Matters, Items twenty-nine through sixty-seven. On item thirty, Supervisor Ridley Thomas requested this item be held. On item fifty-four, the Inspector General requested this item be continued to November twenty-fourth, 2020. On item twenty, on item fifty-five, Supervisor Barker requested this item be held. On item fifty-nine, Supervisor Barker requested that the Board approves the settlement but the Corrective Action Plan be continued to December eighth, 2020. On item sixty, Supervisor Ridley Thomas requested this item be held. On page forty-nine, this includes miscellaneous additions to the agenda which will post more than seventy-two hours in advance. On item sixty-five A, Supervisor Han requested this item be held. On item fifty-five, sixty-five F, Supervisor Kuhl requested this item be held. The requests for continuances through sixty-five I are before you.
Moved by Supervisor Kuhl, seconded by Supervisor Han, without objection, so ordered.
On page fifty, ordinance for introduction. Item sixty-eight is an ordinance for introduction amending the proprietary petroleum pipeline franchise granted to the California Resource Foundation Corporation to extend the term of the franchise for fifteen years through December thirty-first, 2035. On page fifty-one, public hearings, items sixteen, nine through seventy-one, these items will be held for hearing. On page fifty-four, notices for closed session. On items, on page fifty-seven, items continues from previous meetings for further discussion and action by the Board. On item A four, Supervisor Ridley Thomas requests to hold this item related to the county's homelessness prices. That completes the reading of the agenda Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will now take public comments for all agenda items except for public hearing items sixty-nine through seventy-one. Madam Executive Officer, please read the call-in information that was also provided on the agenda and explain the speaking rules to those members of the public who are calling in to address the Board.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call eight seven seven, two two six, eight one six three, and use participant code number five one nine zero two one zero. To repeat, please call eight seven seven, two two six, eight one six three, and use participant code number five one nine zero two one zero. Do not call the number if you only want to listen to the meeting. To listen only, please call eight seven seven, eight seven three, eight zero one seven, and follow the instructions. To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state your name and which agenda items you wish to speak on. You have one minute to speak on one agenda item or two minutes to speak on two or more agenda items. In addition, those who would like to address the Board with general public comment will provide one additional minute for a maximum total up to three minutes per person for all agenda items, including general public comment. We will allocate up to sixty minutes for public comment on all of the items. If there are no speakers waiting before the sixty minutes have lapsed, we will close public comment. We will continue to accept all written comments that come in during the meeting, which will become part of the record. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell if you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one warning from County Council or the Chair. If you do not immediately or clearly get on topic, or be straight off-topic again, you will forfeit the rest of your time and the Chair will move to the next speaker. Please note that if you're also listening to the Board meeting on a computer or speakerphone, you will need to turn down the volume on those devices as soon as the moderator calls on you. If you do not turn down the volume, there will be an echo. Moderator, may we have the first speaker please?
And as a reminder, to address the Board, if you have not already done so, please press one then zero at this time. Do not press one then zero a second time, or you will be removed from the queue. Our first participant is Joseph Maislich. Please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning. My name's Joseph Maislich. I'll be talking about item thirty-six and possibly some of the general public comment time. I'm a marriage and family therapist, and in the nineties, for seven years, I donated one hour, one evening a week with the Central LA Sexual Abuse Unit of the Department of Children and Family Services, and I'm also on the steering committee of LARP, although not speaking for LARP today. Item thirty-six is enterprise fair chance system described as intended to cement the county's status as a fair chance employer and lead the community. I certainly support the improvement of data collection on that, but the county government, which has led in some respects on fair chance, is also split on the principle. One of the principles as proposed by the National Employment Law Project in a 2015 policy brief reads, require individualized assessments considering the age of the offense. "require individualized assessments considering the age of the offense, its job relevance, and evidence of rehabilitation. A clear standard reduces blanket bans," unquote. Yet the county's zero tolerance human trafficking-
Thank you, you now have one minute to address your general public comment, please begin.
Thank you, and this does apply generally, but specifically to this subject of the fair employment. The Zero Tolerance Human Trafficking Ordinance enacted in 2016 is such a ban, unconditionally forbidding county employment of anyone with a conviction for one of the offenses classed as human trafficking, and it also affects contract employers. We do have our empathies and our antipathies ourselves. Some harmful acts upset us emotionally and even physically, some enrage us, and some seem to call us to retaliate. We can respect those feelings and yet not let them take over policymaking, and not let them eclipse the principles and practices we've found to be helpful to the community from research and experience. The result is we can get policies, if we let them take over, we can get policies and practices that actually produce harm. For if a person is unconditionally barred from employment, either with the county government or elsewhere, how and where are they to obtain legal work?
Thank you, your time has expired, next speaker please.
Unisa Hernandez, please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, good morning Honorable Chair, Woman, and Members of the Board. My name is Unisa Hernandez, a member of the Justice LA Coalition and co-executive director of La Defensa. I'd like to speak on Items 16, 23, 14, and general public comments. I'd like to start off by just congratulating everyone on the incredible successes we've had, not only at the federal level, but here at the local level. LA County is leading the way in alternatives to incarceration, and moving resources where they need to be moved, which is in community, which is in youth, which is in small business support. So just thank you to the Board of Supervisors, for those that supported giving LA County voters the opportunity to pass Measure J, and we look forward to working with you on the implementation of that. So thank you Supervisor Kuhl, and Supervisor Solis and MRT for helping us with the Measure J motion. Also, I'd like to talk about Agenda Item 16, and would love, just to reiterate, you know, it's not just about the sheriff who's in that position now. We know how he is, but it really is a line of people who have led that department that we can look back to that are currently incarcerated for corruption, that it's about the department, right? And so Agenda Item 16 gives us an opportunity to put someone in that position and give the Board the opportunity to look into how we can remove the current sheriff and make that position an appointed position. We've seen how it's much easier to hold folks who are appointed accountable, and make sure that they fall in line with the vision of the rest of the county, and not just, you know, throw around the vision that they had for the county. So I think, you know, Item 16 is a great opportunity to create more synergy with the whole county. So thank you Supervisor Ridley Thomas and Sheila Kuhl for putting that forward. Also Agenda Item 14, around Measure R. It concerns me that that group is just being created now, so thank you Supervisor Solis for putting this motion forward. We need to see the things that LA County voters put forward implemented, just as if it was something that was approved by the Board. So thank you Supervisor-
Thank you, you now have one minute to address general public comment, please begin.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I'm not that fast, I'm still recovering from an incredible campaign that we had, so please forgive me. But also would like to uplift that we need to make sure that victim services and victim grant dollars go to organizations and county departments that are actually helping people who have been impacted by harms survive and thrive. So with Agenda Item 52 and Agenda Item 53, I don't think the Board should authorize the Office of the District Attorney to administer any victim restitution funding. These funds would be better served to survivors of violence if placed outside of law enforcement agencies and made available to survivors who did not wish to participate in prosecution. And I'm speaking also with the lens of someone who has been impacted by harms. Just thank you, and yes, appreciate you all.
Thank you, next speaker please.
Allison Riley, please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Allison Riley. I'm the Senior Director of Housing Development for Venice Community Housing, and I'm gonna speak on Items 13, 25, 16, 23, 14, general public comment. So primarily, my reason for the call is to say thank you and to encourage you to commit to the fourteen million dollars on Measure R, Item 13, to acquire small multifamily properties. This will really protect tenants from displacement, you know, create permanent affordability and opportunities to build wealth through limited equity cooperatives, and is a great opportunity to demonstrate that acquiring small multifamily properties is a way to protect our small housing stock in Los Angeles. Also in favor of the eviction moratorium, which needs to be extended to prevent displacement and increase of homelessness. On Item 16, the sheriff has shown himself to be unfit and not willing to protect the people, and it is very important that we hold him accountable and get him out of office and indeed really restructure how we imagine public safety. And likewise, I'd just say that we support Items 10, 11, 14, 16, 21, 23, 25, 52, 53, and 71. And thank you for all of your work in these highly important aspects of work. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker please.
Genevieve Clevero, please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Yes, this is Genevieve Clevero, I will speak to Items 10, 16, 21, and 55. Those items have all to do with the sheriff issue. I think it's very important to enforce AB 1185, and since we give the subpoena power, we make sure it is enforced. And I am very concerned of the report, Item 55, of the Rosas, showing that there has been an increase of one hundred percent complaint about what's going on in the jail and so on. So I think those need to be absolutely reviewed. And I think that times that the issue of the sheriff, until he, you know, do not respect subpoena power, things are not going to work out. And I think for that, we should make sure it is. And maybe we should make effort to recall it if he's not willing to do that. So I want to really approve the board action in those situations. So anyway, have a good day. I hope that we go back to open meetings soon. And on Item CS2, I think it would be nice if we know which department head is being reviewed. That's one question I have all the time. Anyway, that's what I have for today, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker please.
Vanny Ortiz, please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, this is Vanny, yes, I'll be speaking on Item 2D, and also a public comment. My name is Vanny Ortiz, I live in Bull Heights, and I am the co-president of the Fide Comiso Comunitario Tierra Libre, the first community land trust in the east side, predominantly led by women of color, and we are in support of the expansion of the CLT partnership program. Fide Comiso Comunitario Tierra Libre believes that working-class people of color should have the right to housing and community control of land, because historically, land and housing have been tools to extract wealth and labor from our communities. Communities of people of color, the working-class people of color. As a CLT, we are rebuilding a framework to protect, repair, invest, and transform communities so that no one is left behind, and de-commodify land, taking it out of that speculative market so that no one can flip a house or build luxury condos on it. And during this pandemic and ongoing housing crisis, we believe that community land trusts offer an important tool to stabilize our communities. Low-income communities of color are carrying the brunt of this pandemic, and we can't allow corporate interests to further exploit the losses we are experiencing. Neighborhoods are facing high levels of COVID-19 infections and immense displacement pressure, the need of resources to make it out of the pandemic with more opportunities. Through the CLT stewardship and tenant ownership models, this investment from the county can result in long-term protection of current high-risk families from being displaced, and also provides generations of families-
Thank you, your time has expired.
-of low-income workers-
Next speaker please.
And as a reminder, to address the board, if you've not already done so, please press 1 then 0 at this time. Do not press 1 then 0 a second time, or you will be removed from the queue. Mary Zendejas, please state the regular agenda items that you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, my name is Mary Zendejas, and I'm the councilwoman for First District, and I will be here in the city of Long Beach, and I will be addressing Item Number 4. I am so excited about this item. I just wanted to start by saying thank you to our Chair and the Board of Supervisors, especially the Office of Supervisor Han for inviting me to speak today. Motel conversion projects like this are a huge priority for myself and for the city of Long Beach. And I am so grateful to have a wonderful partnership with the county that shares this vision. I couldn't be happier to support this item, because we have a moral obligation to our residents to address of housing and homelessness in our communities. And the best way to do that is by increasing access to permanent supportive housing. I'm so excited about what this project means for the future of the city and the county, and I hope that you'll join me in supporting it.
Thank you, your time has expired, next speaker please.
Suely Soro, please state the regular agenda items that you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning Madam Chair and honorable members of the LA County Board of Supervisors. My name is Dr. Suely Soro, I'm the councilwoman-elect for Long Beach City Council District 6. I am in support of Agenda Item Number 4. The Holiday Inn that is being proposed to be purchased is across the street from my district and has been used as part of Project Room Key since the beginning of the pandemic. I am just thrilled about the purchase of it as part of Project Home Key for a hundred and thirty-five rooms of a permanent supportive housing. This is just one of the many steps I know. I'll be working in partnership with Supervisor Han in this district to ensure we address homelessness. So thank you so much.
Thank you, next speaker please.
Karen Refaid, please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
My name is Karen Refaid, and I'm with the Long Beach Gray Panthers. And we are in support of Item Number 4, the purchase of the Holiday Inn to house primarily previous homeless, and many of them are seniors and have already been successfully housed. We are very much seeking expansion of this program, we believe this is a valuable program. And Item Number 23, which is about Project J, and we support that also. And we want to support the clear and transparent opportunity for all kinds of services, including the services for the elderly to be included in the funding sources for this particular new source. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, next speaker please.
Zarita Jones, please state the regular agenda items that you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hello, I will be addressing 13 and 2D and public comment, general public comment.
Please begin.
Yes, well, my full name is Zarita Jones, and I'm representing Liberty Community Land Trust, and I'm also born and raised in the city of Los Angeles, and I am in full support of the expansion of the Community Land Trust Partnership Program. I feel that Community Land Trust can offer an important tool to stabilize our communities with methods that have been proven all over the United States and in other countries. And during this pandemic or housing crisis, we need clever and innovative and cost-effective ways to house the people within our communities and system house. I would also like to mention that we want to take and make sure that corporate interference doesn't further exploit the people and the citizens in this time of need and during this COVID-19. We are in the process of trying to stabilize communities, and we don't want corporate entities to diminish our housing stock specifically when so many people are getting ill. There's an upturn in infection and displacement specifically within my area, and also with the CLT's tenant ownership model, and along with the stewardship of their own land, which is very important, which allows community investment at this time for long-term protection and for current and high-risk families also being displaced. Would provide, not being displaced would provide future generations and families of growing housing stock. We want to make sure we protect our low-income, our working families, our seniors, and displaced and disabled persons like myself. And I want to make sure that with this program that we can-
Thank you, you now have one minute to address your general public comment, please begin.
Oh yes, we want to make sure that we retain affordable and stable housing and preserve the health of our citizens. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, next speaker please.
Lena Gonzalez, please state the regular agenda items that you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Thank you, good morning Honorable Chair and Honorable Supervisors. This is Senator Lena Gonzalez, proudly representing Long Beach, Southeast Los Angeles, and unincorporated Florence Firestone in Walnut Park. I'd like to thank each of you individually and collectively for your leadership on Agenda Item 1D, which is the acquisition of a Project Home Key site in central Long Beach. As you know, central Long Beach is in Senate District 33, and I'm very proud that we are actually applying funds through the county for this site that is facing two crises, homelessness and COVID-19. And especially because we know that people of color are disproportionately affected, something that the state of California is placing more priority on in collaboration with LA County. The city of Long Beach's homeless count in January of this year identified over two thousand unhoused individuals, many who have families who are living on the streets with them. So this site, in conjunction with North Long Beach's year-long shelter and in collaboration with LASSA, will provide peace of mind for unhoused residents, our communities, and can be a successful model across our state. I just want to thank you again from the bottom of my heart as the Chair of the Pandemic Committee in the State Senate. I know we'll continue to work together to ensure people continue to have housing, as well as I want to thank each and every one of you for your renter protections and your focus on housing stability with that, thank you very much.
Your time has expired, thank you. Next speaker please.
Michelle Wong, please state the regular agenda items that you are addressing today, and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
I'm in Jever of 2D and 13. My name is Michelle Wong, and I live in Koreatown neighborhood of Los Angeles. I support the expansion of the Community Land Trust Partnership Program. We've been in a housing crisis for a while, exacerbated by the pandemic, so we need a variety of solutions, and I deeply believe that CLTs offer an essential tool to stabilize our communities. I know this personally, because I'm fortunate to live next to CLT properties. My neighbors who live at the Limited Equity Housing Cooperative in partnership with the Beverly Vermont Community Land Trust have affordable housing that ranges from six hundred to twelve hundred dollars, thus allowing them to take care of their families and care for the community. BBCLPT had played a major role in saving fifty families from losing their housing by helping LAUSD find alternative sites for schools. We also started a learning garden in cooperation with LAUSD. Now, as part of a coalition of five CLTs and growing, we want to help the county with solutions for preventing homelessness, stabilizing communities in the midst of gentrification, and keeping homes permanently affordable. As data shows, low-income communities and communities of color are carrying the brunt of these multiple crises. My neighbors in Koreatown, many of whom are essential workers, face high levels of COVID infection and devastating, devastating displacement. We need resources to make it out of the pandemic with more opportunities. need resources to make it out of the pandemic with more opportunities. Through CLT stewardship and tenant ownership model, this investment from the county can result in long-term protection of current high-risk families from being displaced and provide future generations of families and a growing cohort of low-income workers and seniors with affordable, stable, and healthy housing. Your leadership in supporting this program will make a difference in these families' lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I look forward to working with you.
And as a reminder, to address the board, if you've not already done so, please press one then zero at this time. Do not press one then zero a second time, or you will be removed from the queue. Mark Anthony Clayton Johnson, please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, Supervisors. Ten, sixteen, twenty-three, and public comment. Mark Anthony with Justice L.A. You know, this is a really important day. Ten years ago yesterday, fourteen of us who represented the Coalition to End Sheriff Violence would be walking into LASD headquarters in Monterey Park to sit down and have a meeting with Sheriff Baca to demand civilian oversight. This was the sheriff who had already mocked the electoral process. He had already told the Citizens Commission on Jail Violence that if the people didn't like him, they shouldn't elect him. He had already told us that LASD had the gold standard of oversight. And he told an East L.A. mother in that meeting, a mother whose son had been hospitalized and brutalized by the sheriffs in the jails, a mother who was a nurse and understood intimately the injuries her son had suffered psychologically and physically, that oversight with people who looked like and represented her would never happen. And so, we walked out of that meeting with a very clear and prophetic mandate, knowing that whatever mechanisms of accountability and transparency and shifts in power for Black and Brown people that we were going to build had to be bigger than the denial of Sheriff Baca, bigger than the sadistic arrogance of Tanaka, bigger than the rejection of subpoena power by Sheriff McDonald, bigger than the offensive recalcitrance of Villanueva. And so, I want to thank Supervisor Soli for bringing forward the ratification of 1185 because you are continuing to advance the legacy of East L.A. mothers who to this day are tending the wounds of Sheriff Violence. I want to thank Supervisor Kewell for throwing down on sheriff accountability consistently. And I want to thank Supervisor Ridley Thomas for throwing down since day one on sheriff accountability and transparency, which is why we need Item Number Sixteen. Four years is a long time to wait for a ballot box to check a rogue sheriff. And so, exploring mechanisms to remove the sheriff is a part of that prophetic mandate that we felt walking out of that meeting with Sheriff Baca ten years ago. It's a part of a trajectory that must happen if we are going to get accountability that we should have had decades ago and that we've been repairing from the harm.
Thank you. You now have one minute to public comment.
And so, before you, it was an opportunity to do that. And I can't ask and think about what would it have been like if ten years ago we had Measure J? If ten years ago, Black and Brown communities had the Measure J implementation that sits before you today? Will we get to not disrupt?
Paul Iscola, please state the regular items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Paul Iscola, Superintendent of Schools, Archdiocese of Los Angeles. I'll be speaking on Item Number Three today. I want to thank the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Barker, and all the supervisors in particular, Supervisor Han for her invitation this morning to speak on her motion. This is an moment indeed as we start to recognize the horizon of a vaccine. And the timeliness of this could come at a moment for children here in L.A., the Archdiocese of Los Angeles.
So, Madam Chair, I can't hear this public comment. I'm wondering if it's my connection or his connection.
Mr. Iscola, your line is open still for us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Hi, good morning. I'm sorry if I had some technical difficulties on my end. Again, my name is Paul Iscola, Superintendent of Schools for the Archdiocese of Los Angeles. I'm here to speak on Item Number Three, motion by Supervisor Han. I want to thank Supervisor Han and her leadership and the leadership of all the supervisors on maintaining great efficacy and support for the children of the county of Los Angeles. And Supervisor Han, thank you for your invitation this morning. I want to speak in support of your motion. The Archdiocese of Los Angeles serves in every community throughout Los Angeles County. We operate over 200 schools, reaching over 70,000 children in L.A. County. The promise of a vaccine is one that I know for all of my colleagues and families throughout the county is an exciting promise that we are looking at on the horizon as we see a new year coming. As a result of our relationship with the county and our presence here in L.A. County for, since the beginning of the incorporation of the county, we see it as an obligation and a responsibility to partner with the county on the importance of
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Jonathan Jaeger, please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Jaeger. I'm a staff attorney with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles and I'm speaking on Items Two-D, Thirteen, and Twenty-Five. We are in strong support of the motion to expand the pilot Community Development Land Trust Partnership Program. Community Land Trust play a crucial role in building affordable housing and other community resources that are truly owned and controlled by the communities themselves. And LAFLA is proud to support Community Land Trust in their mission to make Los Angeles County a more equitable place to live. The $14 million will be well spent in acquiring and rehabilitating properties across the county. As we all know, real estate in Los Angeles is expensive. But the unique benefit of Community Land Trust is that by recapturing a property's equity, an initial subsidy like this one will ensure affordable, safe housing long into the future without as much need for ongoing operating support. Therefore, we urge you to pass this item. We are also greatly appreciative of the Board's motion to extend the county's eviction protection executive order through January 31, 2021. This extension, which will be coterminous with the statewide protections under AB 3088, will provide tenants with much-needed security and peace of mind during the season. We also hope that prior expiration, these protections can be revisited in an apprehensive manner to provide county residents a possible safety net as we move into a new wave of COVID-19 cases and a second economic uncertainty due to the pandemic. Tenants are still suffering significant hardship, and this is far too often being threats, intimidation, and harassment by landlords. We are optimistic we can find ways to continue to protect tenants that are not protected by state law and pick up where Sacramento fell short. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Austin Ruttner. May we have the next speaker, please? Mr. AT&T Moderator.
Certainly. Next, Kurt Peterson. Please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Kurt Peters, co-president of Unite Here Local Eleven. We represent 30,000 hotel and food service workers who sustain the region's most important industry tourism. I'll be speaking on Item Four, Sixteen, with comment. We have been in favor of Project Room Key and Project Home Key. It was this that so few hotels, including those owned by the county, participated in Project Room Key. However, the transition to Project Home Key needs to protect the workers who work at these hotels. Fifty workers at Holiday Inn Long Beach face
Madam Chair, this is Sir Han. I don't know if you can hear me, but the connection is really bad and we're not able to hear public comment. I think they should stop. I think you should stop and get it fixed and then resume. It would be my suggestion.
That the internet, they're working on it right now. We can either take a 10-minute reset to have them look into what the problem is and resume if that would, colleagues.
Yeah, it's all clear. So, I couldn't hear you, Madam Chair.
No, I understand. It's county-wide, so maybe a five-minute recess and see if we can fix it, okay? So, give us five minutes.
Okay.
Steve?
Yes, Supervisor Ridley Thomas? Give us one more minute. I think we have it fixed, so why don't we go ahead and resume public comment?
Kurt Peterson, please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
I will speak on Sixty-five-D, Four, and Sixteen, and public comment. Good morning. My name is Kurt Peterson, co-president, Unite Here Local Eleven. We represent 30,000 hotel and food service workers who built and who sustain the region's most important industry tourism. On Item Sixty-five, we are obviously in favor of proceeding on public health councils. On Item Four, while we are incredibly supportive of Project Room Key and its successor, Project Home Key, the transition to Home Key needs to protect the workers who work at these hotels that are being acquired. Fifty workers at the Holiday Inn Long Beach face losing their jobs and putting them and their families at risk of homelessness. That is not an acceptable outcome of putting people in those rooms who are unhoused. The county needs to protect these jobs, protect the county's proprietary interest against labor disputes, and house the homeless. Finally, we are in support of Item Sixteen, the motion for the immediate removal of the sheriff. Simply put, Sheriff Villanueva is a failure. He has failed to fulfill his promise to repair the records that his predecessors left behind. He has failed to protect this community. And for our union, Sheriff Villanueva has failed to allow an independent investigation of the killing of Andres Mordado, the son of one of our members. Four years ago, our members went to Arizona to unseat another vile and corrupt sheriff, Joe Arapayo. Sheriff Villanueva and Sheriff Arapayo
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
County building.
Gabriela Nunez, please state the regular agenda items that you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi. I'll be addressing Items Thirteen and Two-D and general public comment. My name is Gabriela Nunez. I live in South L.A. and I support the expansion of the CLT Partnership Program. With robust support, the Land Trust can offer long-term affordability, stability, and protection for low-income communities of color, both at this crucial time and far into the future. Expanding this program would allow Land Trust to permanently preserve affordable housing in many neighborhoods that are at risk of displacement, providing communities and residents the opportunity to continue living in their neighborhoods. I am happy to know that the country is working with, that the county is working with L.A. CLTs, and I hope that you all continue to support CLTs and the program by expanding it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And as a reminder, to address the board, if you've not already done so, please press one then zero at this time. Do not press one then zero a second time, or you will be removed from the queue. Lex Stepling, please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lex Stepling. I'm the Director of Policy and Campaigns at Dignity and Power Now and a member of Justice L.A. Here to speak on Sixteen, Twenty-three, Fourteen, and public comment. Starting with Sixteen, just to echo what others have said, we're here for a reason. It's ironic because many proponents of law enforcement often like to doubt the fact that people are given too many chances. I can't imagine a department anywhere else in the world that's been given more chances than the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. And to use the term "failure" would actually be being euphemistic. They have violated their insipidity. They have violated the community they're supposed to serve over and over again to a countless extent. And although policy is more important than optics and symbolism, I think we're also all very tired of how horribly Alex Villanueva represents us as a county. I would also like to speak in support of Twenty-three and Fourteen, mainly Measure J, Measure R, the L.A. County Alternative to Incarceration vision, the Care First vision. the LA County Alternative to Incarceration vision, the care-first vision, the goal to, this has been finally realized, to close Men Central Jail. These are all, represent a beautiful sum of parts that LA County has led on, where we are putting everything together and ensuring there will be resources for those alternatives that do not live under the dominion of these failed law enforcement departments. As we always say, the answer is in plain sight. We need to ensure that these things are done and done correctly. And by "done correctly," that means completely informed by the community that has steered us in this direction. Part of why the LA County Board of Supervisors has represented us so well recently is because they've worked in lockstep with the community and displayed the possibility of what happens when civic democracy is truly practiced. So we need to continue in that direction and make sure that how we implement these resources, how we implement these visions, is done in the spirit of that democratic process that got us here in the first place. And how we make sure that law-
Thank you, you now have one minute to address your general public comment. Please begin.
That law enforcement doesn't step in and allow their own political self-interest to muddy the waters that are finally clean. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Lauren Nakano? Please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
I'll be addressing on item three and general comment. My name is Lauren Nakano, I'm with the Beach Cities Health District, and I'm also the co-chair of the Committee Prevention and Population Health Task Force. Speaking in support of item three, the COVID-19 vaccine distribution site. BCHD works in partnership with our three public school districts and has operated the Redondo Beach COVID test site in partnership with Department of Health Services. As the county and communities prepare for the vaccine, BCHD is happy to continue to serve as a convener to coordinate efforts among our school districts, cities, and community partners. We can also support exploring other distribution site options, including our own properties. From our experience with testing and flu vaccines, we have recommendations for vaccine distribution process, including setting up appointment, vaccine registries, and connections to primary care providers that you're looking at a plan for vaccine distribution and are happy to support that in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Gabriela Vazquez? Please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, honorable members of the board, my name is Gabriela Vazquez and I'm a resident of the Second District. I would like to speak on agenda items ten, eleven, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, and general public comment. I hope I can make it through. For items ten and twenty-one, I want to thank Supervisor Solis and Kewell for introducing the motion for item ten and Supervisor Ridley Thomas for introducing the motion for item twenty-one. I also want to thank Supervisor-elect Holly Mitchell for championing AB eleven eighty-five in the State Senate and working with the community to ensure its successful passing. The call for oversight now grows more urgent as the Sheriff's Department continues to recklessly terrorize and endanger our communities. An independent investigation process, including independent counsel, is required to assure that oversight and investigations are truly beyond the obstruction of the sheriff and influence of county politics. LA Sheriff's Department continues to demonstrate inadvertent addressing concerns as to conditions and safety protocols during the COVID-19 pandemic and refuses to provide details as to reported COVID-19-related deaths. Now more than ever, there is a critical need for transparency and truly holding the sheriffs accountable, and this must be done through instituting an independent counsel and investigative process. Supervisor, now is the time to create an infrastructure that courageously addresses the critical need for transparency in our judicial system, I mean, excuse me, in our justice system. On item eleven, across LA County, undocumented workers continue doing essential jobs during the COVID pandemic, yet these workers who are so integral to our collective health and survival during the unprecedented public health crisis have been left without meaningful protections for their own health and without access to CARES Act funding for their families. I'm thinking about street vendors here as well. So when employers lay off workers because of COVID-19, those who lack work authorization are ineligible for unemployment insurance, even when they pay taxes, putting their entire family at risk. I strongly urge the board to fill an amicus brief and challenge, challenging the exclusion of mixed immigration status families from receiving the life-saving benefits of the care-
Thank you, you now have one minute to address general public comment. Please begin.
Thank you, on agenda, item sixteen, I just want to thank Supervisors Ridley, Supervisors Ridley, Thomas, and Kewell for bringing this motion so that we could begin to take bold and meaningful steps to hold LA County Sheriff accountable. For decades, the County Sheriff's Department has been rife with corruption, abuse of power, impunity, leading notably to the federal conviction of former Sheriff Libaca. Over the last two years, Sheriff Villanueva, the Sheriff's Department has undergone a sweeping undoing of reforms, undermining basic accountability and civilian oversight at every turn, and systematically violating state transparency laws. Also want to jump to item twenty-three, I just want to thank this board for their bold and historic decision to place Measure J on the ballot. We won, it was amazing, and it took your, it took your strength, it took our strength, it took the community's strength. So I want to thank you all, and I want to insist that every dollar moved from the carceral system to community care is honoring and supporting our employees.
Thank you, your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Austin Butner? Please state the regular agenda items that you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Thank you, this is Austin Butner, I'm Superintendent of Los Angeles Unified School District, speaking in general public comment in item number three. We appreciate the tireless efforts of Los Angeles County provides a safety net for so many of the families we serve. In our schools, more than eighty percent of the families live in poverty, and estimates tell us more than three-quarters of those families have lost work due to the pandemic. So it's important we all work together to create a safety net, a school district, the county, and the twenty-six cities LA Unified serves. The best way to provide much-needed health services to children is at schools, where they're almost every day. Los Angeles Unified is embarking on a nation-leading effort to provide testing for COVID-19 for students and staff at schools. This will help identify and isolate people with the virus, or those they may have come in contact with, and protect the health and safety of all in the school community. A school-backed health system like this also may be the best way to provide a COVID-19 vaccine to children and families throughout the communities we serve. It wasn't that long ago, in nineteen fifty-four, when the first children received a vaccine for polio at Arsenal Elementary School in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Los Angeles Unified is committed to working with the County Board of Supervisors, grateful to Supervisor Hawn for her leadership, health authorities, and Los Angeles County in every way possible to help end the public health crisis so students can return to schools as soon as possible, in the safest way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Mariella Alburges? Please state the regular agenda items that you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, Mariella Alburges, Director of Implementation for Reformally Jails. I'm speaking in support of items ten, fourteen, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, and would like to also provide general public comment. Myself and our community partners want to thank the supervisors for their continued commitment to prioritizing public safety, investing in community health, and upholding accountability over the Sheriff's Department. Supervisor Solis, thank you for your leadership in calling for motion fourteen in support of the allocation of resources for the implementation of Measure R and the drafting of the Comprehensive Public Safety Reinvestment Plan. Since the passing of Measure R on March third, with the support of seventy-three percent of county voters, our communities have been impacted by COVID-19 pandemic, the continued killing and harassment at the hands of the Sheriff's Department, have been targeted by law enforcement for exercising civil right to protest, and continue to be incarcerated at an ever-alarming rate. We now account for over fifteen thousand incarcerated community members in our jails. When voted into law, Measure R not only provided the COC with their newfound subpoena power, but also tasked the commissioners with the responsibility of drafting a comprehensive public safety reinvestment plan within seven months. Although we are grateful for the steps taken by the COC to convene a Measure R ad hoc committee with which Reformally Jails and partners have been in dialogue and continue to be open to a transparent process of collaboration, the seven-month mandate of the measure has come and gone as of the October third deadline, and little progress has been made. We ask that the board allocate appropriate funds to support the commission in prioritizing the drafting of the plan, including feasibility study for the equitable implementation of R, aiming to reduce jail population and reinvest related systems costs into mental health, prevention, and additional community-based systems of care. Our communities can no longer wait. Now is the time for the commissioners, with the support of the board, to act and fulfill the people's mandate. It is clear that LA County is leading the shift in tied towards equitable criminal justice reform with twenty-twenty community-led victories such as Measure R, AB eleven eighty-five, and most recently Measure J. Supervisors, now is the time to protect and invest in these victories. This is a historic call to action and opportunity for county leadership to deepen their commitment to public safety and law enforcement accountability, and answer the growing call for care over cages and reimagining-
Thank you, you now have one minute to address your general public comment. Please begin.
And reimagining public safety. So with that said, I'm in strong support of item twenty-three, to establish an inclusive and transparent Measure J revenue allocation process. I also want to commend Supervisors Solis, Kewell, and Ridley Thomas for upholding the importance of ratifying AB eleven eighty-five with motions ten and twenty-one, and for the courageous leadership demonstrated by Supervisors Kewell and Ridley Thomas for exploring the removal of Sheriff in motion sixteen. Sheriff Villanueva has no respect for the law or for the concept of oversight. He is reckless, fear monger, who continues to show himself as inept and unwilling to manage his department. Villanueva must go immediately. However, I recognize the issue does not begin and end with him. We must look further into means of oversight and upholding accountability by implementing a truly independent oversight and investigative process, including that of independent counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Eric Ariz? Please state the regular agenda items that you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, I will be speaking on item twenty-three and general public comment. Good morning, supervisors, my name is Eric Ariz and I'm the manager of Home Systems Change with United Way of Greater LA. Joining today to ask for unanimous vote on item twenty-three and the creation of an inclusive and transparent Measure J revenue and allocation process. I want to deeply thank and acknowledge the board for making a bold and historic decision to place Measure J on the ballot. With the support of your leadership, preliminary election results indicate an overwhelming victory for the reimagine LA Coalition and Measure J. This victory was powered by communities across LA County that embrace a new vision for public safety for our neighborhoods. We embrace a vision that rejects a false choice between good jobs and growing our movement for racial justice. A vision that dismisses the idea that we have to choose between public safety and community investment because we know that the safest communities are created through housing, healthcare, jobs, and alternatives to incarceration. And a vision that challenges the notion that we cannot address our county budget priorities while meeting the needs of Black, Brown, and Low communities because we believe it is possible to create a budget that reflects our values of racial equity and justice, transparency, and inclusion. As we move forward, it is critical that we enshrine these values, racial equity and justice, transparency, and inclusion in all aspects of Measure J implementation. And at the same speed that passed Measure J helped lead the next steps in turning our vision into a reality. The motion before you today does just that. Lastly, Measure J is indeed about advancing racial justice and investing in communities that for too long have been starved of resources. However, fundamentally, Measure J is about reimagining all of LA County. As such, we believe it is important that we make a statement in moving forward together today and humbly ask for a unanimous vote in support of item twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Kent Mendoza? Please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, good morning, more supervisors, my name is Kent Mendoza. I'm with, I'm with the Anti-Racism Coalition, the manager of advocacy and community organizing. I want to speak in support of item number sixteen. I would like to thank Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas and Kewell for bringing this motion forward. We support this motion because we, for the past several years, we have witnessed and experienced how the Sheriff's Department has been systematically abusing their power and violating Angelino's constitutional rights. And, you know, we just support, you know, real checks and balances. We have seen enough from this leadership that has really not done anything to, you know, really address the needs of our community. So I just really want to support this item and urge the board to approve this item. Also want to speak on item number twenty-three, establishing an inclusive and transparent Measure J revenue allocation process. I want to thank Supervisor Kewell and Solis for this motion as well. Also, would like to give a quick shout-out to all the advocates who helped with putting Measure J on the ballot. We appreciate all the advocates that really made this possible, ARC members and myself. I know too well from firsthand experiences that punishment, incarceration, and harsh sentences are not the solution. We believe LA County can do better, and with Measure J, we believe LA County can get to a better place, and we look forward to working with everybody during this process and just encourage the board to continue to doing things like this, that really bring us into a better place in our county. I also want to support item number fourteen, ARC supports these items as well. We want to make sure that the Sheriff's Civilian Oversight Commission has subpoena power, it's long overdue, and everything that it comes with, just really want to support these items as well. And for general public comment, I guess, I don't know if that's, I do it here now, but for none of these items, I would just also like to just-
Thank you, your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Yvette Ale? Please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, Yvette Ale with Dignity and Power Now and Justice LA. I'll be speaking on agenda items eleven, sixteen, twenty-three, fifty-two, fifty-three, and general public comment, but also want to state my support for items ten, thirteen, fourteen, twenty-one, twenty-five, and seventy-one. I'm continuously impressed by this board's commitment to a care-first vision and want to validate that you are on the right path, that your commitment to not build new jails, closing MCJ, and instead investing in services is inspiring not only to the people of Los Angeles, but to counties across the nation. The passing of Measure J last week was a resounding message to the people that the people of LA County share the board's care-first vision and demand significant and permanent investments in our most marginalized communities. Ten percent is just the floor, not the ceiling. And I encourage the board and the CEO to build on the mandate of Measure J to make even bolder investments in this care-first vision. For far too long, preserving jobs has been pitted against creating new jobs. Every dollar moved from the carceral system to community care is honoring and supporting our employees, especially lower-income employees of color in those agencies. When referred to a just transition in this motion, that's what we mean, more jobs, better jobs, and a new coalition of advocates and labor to fight for the welfare of our communities. I want to thank Supervisors Ridley, Thomas, and Kewell for bringing motion sixteen to the floor so we can begin to take bold and unprecedented steps meaningfully, hold the Sheriff's Department accountable. We all know Sheriff Villanueva is corrupt and brazenly undermines any attempts at accountability, but this is not new. The department has been undermining our community members and killing our community members long before Villanueva, which is why this pragmatic exploratory motion is long overdue. As a formerly undocumented person, I want to personally thank Supervisor Solis for agenda item eleven. Providing undocumented people and their families CARES Act funding is a humane decision and makes us all safer. Additionally, I want to ask the board and the CEO to support Supervisor Solis's request for thirty million dollars of CARES Act funding for ODR. The housing and treatment provided by ODR has been crucial in reducing the spread of COVID-19 among the county's most vulnerable populations. For items fifty-two and fifty-three, the board should not authorize the DA to administer any victim restitution funding. As a survivor, I know that these funds would be better serving our survivors of violence if placed outside of law enforcement-
Thank you, you now have one minute to address your general public comment. Please begin.
The Office of the DA has consistently not held law enforcement accountable. Creating a lack of accountability has fractured the trust of survivors, particularly Black and Brown women, adding to the inaccessibility of the current support structure. The board should explore administering victim funding through the Alternative to Incarceration Initiative or through our health departments, supported by recommendation seven and eight in the ATI report. Thank you so much, and keep going, you're doing the right thing. Support a care-first vision with all of these motions. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Elsa Tong? Please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, honorable supervisors, my name is Elsa Tong. I'm speaking in favor of related items four and one D. As an active resident of Long Beach, I strongly support the county's acquisition of the Holiday Inn property at Eleventh and Atlantic for the Project Home Key program. This site is located in the heart of central Long Beach, a formerly redlined area that continues to suffer from disinvestment and high concentrations of poverty and people of color. This is exactly the kind of investment into systems of care we need for our community and for our neighbors experiencing homelessness. Many thanks to Supervisors Hawn and Barger for your leadership on this Long Beach site acquisition and your unwavering commitment to ending homelessness. I also want to register my strong support for item thirteen regarding the Community Land Trust Partnership Program. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Jordan Nguyen? Please state the regular agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi there, my name's Jordan Nguyen. I am the lead organizer for the Everyone in Long Beach campaign as part of the United Ways Everyone in Campaign Countywide. I'm speaking on items four, one D, and twenty-three, as well as general public comment. To start with item four, speaking as someone who is a Long Beach resident, I'm in great support of seeing the Holiday Inn, which was a former Project Room Key site, be now further funded- funded and to become a Project Home Key site, which will eventually become permanent supportive housing in the city of Long Beach. We, in this particular time with COVID- nineteen, need deep investment into affordable and supportive housing to help alleviate the burdens that many folks are feeling during this troubling time. Even before the pandemic began, Los Angeles and Long Beach had been experiencing a housing and homelessness crisis. And so, investing deeply in supportive housing such as this Project Home Key site is an important and great long-term investment that will help to alleviate and eventually end the homelessness crisis so long as we continue down this path. So I greatly commend the supervisors for helping facilitate this deal, and I do speak in support of approving those Project Home Key units. To speak on item twenty-three, Measure J was a historic win for residents of Los Angeles County that then out the call across the country that reforms to our local budget that involve the community and incorporate community processes are possible and important. There's a lot of great work that is going to be moving forward, and I do want to emphasize on item twenty-three, when it comes to the oversight, that citizens and particularly those who are involved with health, housing, and jobs, be at the front lines of helping to determine how Measure J funding is going to be spent. There are lots of amazing organizations across Los Angeles that put a lot of work into the Measure J campaign from Black Lives Matter to Justice L.A. to United Way, and beyond that, many folks that they turned out and organized who wanted to see these changes. So making sure that those...
Thank you, you now have one minute to address general public comment, please begin.
Thank you, thank you, I'll be wrapping up shortly. Just making sure that these folks remain involved in this process with Measure J and that Measure J rings true to what it was introduced as, a community budgeting process, making sure that we're prioritizing direct community investment and alternatives to incarceration. Holding strong to that commitment is going to be critical as we move forward on these next steps. So thank you for both of those items, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Pastor Q, please state the regular agenda items that you are addressing today and whether you'll address on general public comment. You may begin.
Yes, good morning all, my name is Pastor Q from the church with our wall of Skid Row, also with Clue Clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice and Creating Justice L.A. I am giving this public comment with great reservations. Speaking of items two, speaking of item two D, I support that, obviously, but item sixteen with great reservations because we definitely don't want to give the board and supervisors more power, but we would, we feel like we don't have a choice, right? Because the sheriff is so out of control. The sheriff is elected not mainly to exercise power, but primarily to ensure public safety. Speaking of those who would abuse their power, Jesus once said, "To whom much is given, much is required." The sheriff has been entrusted with much power and thus, much accountability is required. And since the sheriff has demonstrated in a myriad of ways that he defies accountability, I strongly support item sixteen.
Thank you, your time has expired. Madam Chair, that now concludes the one hour of public comment testimony.
Thank you. If anyone was not able to get through, they are allowed to submit written comments before the end of the board meeting that will be put into the agenda for the record. We will now hear from Sheriff Pia Nueva, who requested to address the board on item fourteen. Sheriff, you will have five minutes to address the board.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and I believe it's item sixteen. It's item sixteen. And the, I want to say first of all that there's an awful lot of bad information and false information out there. I think we need to correct the record. For starters, I think, let me just say that because of my efforts since I took office, ICE has gone from jails, the courthouses, the patrol stations. I've ended all selling of undocumented inmate database to the federal government in exchange for money. I ended the deportation of inmates, undocumented inmates, and that was because I was elected sheriff, not in spite of it. Body worn cameras now here to stay, it's deployed out there in the field. The Bandidos East L.A., that clique has been broken up. People have been held accountable according to the rule of law, and the anti-clique policy that every previous sheriff refused to enact, I did enact, and we are now using it. Moving forward, I championed A B twenty-six fifty-five, I sponsored it, it's been signed into law by the governor, and that prohibits first responders from taking unauthorized photo arrests and disseminating them at the scenes of accidents and the display of human remains. That is in response to the Kobe Bryant tragedy. I've hired eleven hundred deputies in one year, which is a record, and that's, we hired them locally. Our own sons and daughters from our own communities are now the ones who are serving their own community. These are people of color that we're hiring, left and right. I have, for the first time ever in the history of the department, we have four female division chiefs at the same time. That is a very, very big first, because now our leadership ranks reflect the diversity of our line staff, which reflects the diversity of the community, and it's first time ever in the history of the department. We depopulated the nation's largest jail system by over five thousand inmates. We did it in the span of two or three months, and we did it in February before it became the crisis that it was in March, because we were anticipating a problem. And as a result of that, we saved thousands of lives, and we resulted in the loss of five inmates, unfortunately, to the COVID- nineteen. But considering the sheer size of the system, it is a small miracle, because other facilities are a fraction of our size, saw hundreds of deaths. And the template that we created was served and was used throughout the nation for other jail systems and prison systems to save people very successfully. Civil unrest, we had zero deaths, we had zero major injuries. Huge contrast from nineteen ninety-two, from nineteen seventy, from nineteen sixty-five, and all those other areas of civil unrest when there was deaths and there was damage, thousands, billions of dollars, and thousands of people injured. We had nothing, we had minor injuries at best, and we allowed tens of thousands of people, we protected their right to peaceful protest. That is a big improvement. We cut our overtime budget in half, we made good on the transparency promise, we've honored all requests for information from O I G and the C O C, and unfortunately, you've been deliberately misled by your inspector general. He's been feeding you false information for a long time. I want to encourage each and every one of you to go look for yourself, have your justice deputies come inspect any of our facilities, any of our operations, any of the requests for documentation, you'll find out, oh my God, he's actually following through on transparency. If you go to our website, L A S D dot org, you can see the transparency tab, you can click that on, you can see all the sections, all the things that are now seeing the light of day that never, ever before was ever seen the light of day. This is very important. Regarding the homeless, our homeless outreach service team is a model that has been duplicated in other counties very successfully, and we've been out there, going to all the places that no one else dares to go, and reaching out to the homeless, trying to get them to take services, to take shelter, and helping the most vulnerable. So everything we've been doing is about fulfilling the promises of why I took this job, and everything is above the board and subject to inspection. So if anyone, be it the C O C or the O I G, wants to do their job, by all means do it, and all we ask for is a fair and objective process. We don't want politics to intrude in it. And we have a future court date regarding the subpoena issue in my personal office, and that has not been resolved yet. But once that is resolved, then we can talk about that. But in closing, I want to say that I have an open door policy, I'd like to meet with each and every one of you personally, and I extend a good wishes to Mark Ridley Thomas in his new job as the city councilman, and I want to, last but not least, I want to encourage everyone to remember what President Let Biden said, "Let's stop demonizing people, let's start working together, let's find solutions together." Thank you.
Thank you Sheriff Pia Nueva. Madam Executive Officer, please indicate the agenda item numbers on which we will be voting.
The items before you are items one D through three D, one P, one, two, four, five, seven through nine, eleven through thirteen, fifteen, seventeen through twenty-two, twenty-six through twenty-nine, thirty-one through fifty-three, fifty-six through fifty-eight. And item fifty-nine, with the exception of the correction action plan, which was continue, sixty-one through sixty-four, sixty-five B through sixty-five E, sixty-five G through sixty-five I, and sixty-eight are before you.
Thank you, moved by Supervisor Kewell, seconded by Supervisor Han, without objection, so ordered. Will you please call the role, Madam Executive Officer?
Thank you, Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kewell?
Aye.
Supervisor Kewell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barger?
Aye.
Supervisor Barger, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Before we take up public comment on the public hearing items, the executive officer will read the short titles of each public hearing item. Thereafter, we will take the remaining speakers with public comment on the hearing items. Madam Executive Officer, please swear in those who plan to testify before the board on the public hearing item.
In the testimony you may give before this board, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide. Item sixty-nine is a hearing on the transfer of jurisdiction over the Bell Lighting District from the county to the city of Bell. A written departmental statement was provided and correspondence was not received. Item seventy is a hearing on a project number P R J two zero two zero dash zero 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 two six six, amended county code Title twenty-two Planning and Zoning, related to the interim in supporting housing ordinance, which incurrence the development of housing for people experiencing homelessness by streamlining their approval through a ministerial review process and support temporary vehicle living where appropriate in the unencumbered areas of the county. A written departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received. Item seventy-one is a hearing on project number P R J two zero two zero dash zero 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 three zero seven, amended county code Title eight Consumer Protection Business and Wage Regulation Title twenty-one Subdivision and Title twenty-two Planning and Zoning, to establish an Affordable Housing Preservation Ordinance to preserve the existing supply of affordable housing in the unencumbered areas of the county. A written departmental statement was provided and correspondence was received.
We will now take public comment on the public hearing items sixty-nine through seventy-one. Madam Executive Officer, please read the call-in information that was also provided on the agenda and explain the speaking rules to those members of the public who are calling in to address the board.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment on items sixty-nine through seventy-one should call eight four four seven six seven five six five one and use participant code number seven seven five four zero three six. To repeat, please call eight four four seven six seven five six five one and use participant code number seven seven five four zero three six. Do not call the number if you want to listen to the meeting. To listen only, please call eight seven seven eight seven three eight zero one seven and follow the instructions. To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state your name and which public hearing items you wish to speak on. Each person will have one minute for the public for all public hearing items. We will allocate up to sixty minutes for public comment on all the public hearing items. If there are no speakers waiting before the sixty minutes have elapsed, we will close public comment. We will continue to accept all written comments that come in during the meeting, which will become part of the record. When speaking on a public hearing items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell if you're speaking on a public hearing item, you will get one warning from county council or the chair. If you do not immediately or clearly get on topic, or if you stray off topic again, you will forfeit the rest of your time and the chair will move to the next speaker. Please note that if you're also listening to the board meeting on a computer or speakerphone, you will need to turn down the volume on those devices as soon as the moderator calls on you. If you do not turn down the volume, there will be an echo. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Just to be clear, we are talking about... To address the board, if you have not already done so, please press one then zero at this time. Do not press one then zero a second time, or you will be removed from the queue. John Vidic, you have one minute. Please state the public hearing agenda items you are addressing today. You may begin.
This is for agenda item seventy. I'm opposed. This ordinance authorizes residential RV uses without any oversight, monitoring, or inspection to make sure they are properly handling their sewage waste. Residential RVs are already a problem in Acton, where I live, and beyond. There are hundreds of residential RVs used throughout the Santa Clara River watershed that are not connected to a sanitary sewer or permitted septic systems. These have contaminated soil and groundwater resources, and I might point out, an ecologically sensitive area. Right now, the L.A. County Flood Control District and the City of Santa Clara are spending millions of dollars to clean up bacterial contamination in the Santa Clara River, and what you are approving today will make this problem much worse. I thought this board cared about the environment. I thought this board cared about the Santa Clara River. Show us you do. Change the ordinance so that it requires monitoring, inspections, and enforcement in the form of removing residential RV uses if it is not properly disposing of its waste. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Diana Coronado, you have one minute. Please state the public hearing agenda items you are addressing today. You may begin.
Good morning, Supervisor, my name is Diana Coronado, and I'm here on behalf of the Building Industry Association. On behalf of our membership, I'm speaking on item number seventy-one in opposition. We're opposed to specific components of the Affordable Housing Preservation Ordinance and its potential negative impacts to housing. We ask that the county not move forward with this ordinance and that it be reviewed when there is more open and transparent stakeholder process. Similar to our concerns related to the county's inclusionary housing policy, the imposition of an equity share in the A H P O should be removed. We continue to be challenged by the notion that the county is eligible to claim any rights to equity unless it were donated land, participating in financing, or providing some other investment. Moreover, this would be an insurmountable economic challenge for home builders, would make land acquisition difficult and financially infeasible. The replacement fee option appeared not to be usable by certain residential builders, and this exclusion could stop a home builder from investing in a community if the on-site affordable unit construction does not pencil out for their project, further perpetuating the county's housing shortfall. Lastly, the replacement fee study was done under completely different economic conditions that no longer exist due to COVID- nineteen. The study should be reevaluated before an ordinance is adopted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Eric Previn, you have one minute. Please state the public hearing agenda items you are addressing today. You may begin.
I don't know, it's just, it's just very close and awkward, and of course, we know about so much of the family ties, but anyway, it's fair, it's fair that he recuses, and then Krikorian recused on fifty-one, which is one that I'm pretty sure was about, you know, emergency rental assistance. So here you have people who are unable to pay rent during what is the certainly most challenging time in the history of Los Angeles in terms of rent paying because of the pandemic and the loss of so many jobs where people showed up bricks and mortar to do their everyday jobs and were kind of marginalized and put out. So here, Krikorian recuses himself because I guess he feels he rents something to someone. I don't get it. I don't get why they're allowed to portend on some of these issues and others they're not. Now, as regards to the Airbnb, I mean, I don't know, that last guy made a...
Madam Chair, I think he's off topic.
I have to be honest, it sounds like, like we're...
Thank you, your time has expired.
Next speaker, please.
Greg Bonnet, you have one minute. Please state the public hearing agenda items you are addressing today. You may begin.
Hi, good morning, my name is Greg Bonet, I'm a staff attorney at Public Council, speaking in support of item seventy-one, the Affordable Housing Preservation Ordinance. We support the adoption of this ordinance today, and we urge the board to continue to explore ways that the policy can be strengthened. This policy is a crucial piece of the puzzle in addressing the housing and homelessness crisis. It will ensure that when new housing is built, it does not cause the loss of existing affordable housing, and it will discourage projects that could displace tenants and destroy rent-stabilized units. We urge the county to adopt the ordinance today and to explore ways it can later be strengthened, for example, to include a replacement requirement at the fifteen percent AMI level, and to add safeguards to make sure that market rate developers don't use public affordable housing subsidies to meet the replacement obligation, and close other potential loopholes. But again, we believe this is an important ordinance and urge its adoption today while exploring ways to strengthen it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Sasha Herndon, you have one minute. Please state the public hearing agenda items you are addressing today. You may begin. are addressing today. You may begin.
Good morning, Supervisor Sasha Herndon with the Inner City Law Center, speaking in support of item seventy-one. As we seek to address a historic housing crisis compounded by the pandemic, this item represents a critical piece of the puzzle. The Affordable Housing Preservation Ordinance will work in tandem with our inclusionary housing policy to ensure that as we work to increase our affordable housing, we also preserve the critically valuable affordable units we already have. We thank you for your efforts on this ordinance, and we look forward to continued conversations to incorporate additional provisions to strengthen the policy, such as comparability requirements, to advance other priorities like fair housing as we develop critically needed affordable housing units. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other speakers in queue to address the board.
Thank you. We are now going to, if anyone was not able to get through our calls in late, they can submit in writing regarding the public hearing items, and it will be part of the record. Today, we will begin with public hearing items sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one, followed by set item S one, then items three, six, ten, fourteen, sixteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty, fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five A, sixty-five F, and finishing up with item A four. We will now take up the public hearing items. Item sixty-nine is a hearing on the transfer of jurisdiction over the Bell Lighting District to the city of Bell. Are there any supervisors that would like to make remarks? If so, unmute your mic. Hearing none, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item sixty-nine is before us, moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Kewell to approve the item. Madam Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item sixty-nine is before you. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley Thomas? Supervisor Ridley Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kewell?
Aye.
Supervisor Kewell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Now we will go on to item seventy, hearing on county code Title twenty-two, planning and zoning amendment. I have an amendment that I would like to read in, but I first want to thank Amy Bodick and her team for bringing this ordinance before us. My amendment would be, in the county's more rural communities, land use can consist of largely agricultural-zoned parcels in sparsely populated residential areas. Allowing for interim housing measures such as the placement of occupied recreational vehicles on owner-occupied parcels is one of the tools the county is deploying in this ordinance to address critical housing needs. However, in those rural communities, there are concerns about what unintended impact this may have, and a need for greater clarity on the subject. So I would ask that we clarify the ordinance prohibits occupied recreational vehicle parking on vacant lots and lots where the single-family residence is not owner-occupied in section twenty-two point one four zero point six seven zero. Other than that, that is my amendment. Do any of my colleagues wish to testify on this item?
With your permission, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
I'd like to join you in thanking the Department of Regional Planning, as well as County Council and all the stakeholders who help guide the development of this ordinance. Might we say that the compendium of ordinances that have come before the board over the previous months and those being considered today reflect a holistic approach to streamlining the permitting and incentive process for citing a variety of housing types, and we do underscore variety. This ordinance may perhaps be the most critical. It represents a long-awaited and necessary component of our strategy to expedite and scale up our response to the homelessness crisis. We want to respond to this crisis with the urgency that is required, that is warranted, some might say even mandated. We need to make it as easy as possible to cite a variety of housing options. Madam Chair, I do underscore a variety of housing options. And I think this ordinance accomplishes that very objective. And now to my hope and expectation that the necessary resources will follow to ensure that we utilize this ordinance to its full potential. Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues.
Thank you, Supervisor Ridley Thomas. So it would be appropriate to close the hearing, the public hearing. And with the amendment moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by myself, Madam Executive Officer, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item seventy, as amended, is before you. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Aye.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas, aye. Supervisor Kewell?
Aye.
Supervisor Kewell, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Now on to item seventy-one, hearing on county code Title eight, consumer protection, business and wage regulations, Title twenty-one subdivision, and Title twenty-two, planning and zoning amendments. Are there any supervisors that would like to make remarks?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a read-in amendment, if I might.
Supervisor Solis?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to speak after that, if I may.
And I'm third up, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I'd like to thank Supervisor Kewell, her staff, as well as my staff, as well as our Department of Regional Planning, and also the Affordable Housing Preservation Community. And this is a very important ordinance before us today. We've heard already from some individuals that called in, that we have a severe housing shortage problem, and gentrification continues to impact our communities. I think this is a good way of helping us address that as we move forward. And we all understand the significance of keeping people housed and preserving affordable units. Although some may want the ordinance to be further strengthened, I believe it's imperative to adopt the Affordable Housing Preservation Ordinance given these challenging times. This ordinance is initiated by Board of Supervisors back in 2018 and was one of the implementation programs of the Affordable Housing Action Plan, and will help us address the urgent need to preserve the county's existing supply of affordable housing. The preservation of affordable housing is a key strategy in the county's affordable housing homeless prevention efforts. Existing units represent an important resource in meeting the county's needs for housing affordability, and especially for lower-income households. The proposed ordinance requires a replacement of units that are income-restricted, rent-stabilized, or occupied by lower, very low, or extremely low-income households in the five years prior to application submittal. It also requires a replacement of units that were withdrawn from rent or leased pursuant to the Ellis Act within the ten years prior to application submittal. With that, board colleagues, I move that item seventy-one be approved as amended as follows. We therefore move that the Board of Supervisors, one, close the public hearing, two, certify the addendum to the general plan update E I R, R P P L two zero two zero 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 one four seven four, has been completed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and reflects the independent judgment and analysis of the county of Los Angeles, and find that the Board of Supervisors has reviewed and considered the information contained in the addendum with the E I R prior to approving the project and approve the addendum. And, three, indicate its intent to approve ordinance, R P P L two zero two zero 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 one four seven three, with the following modifications in section twenty-two point one six six point zero seven zero, covenant and agreement. A, clarify that in addition to one hundred and eighty-day time limit for covenant recordation, no building permit shall be issued prior to the covenant recordation. And B, include language for the housing permit regarding equity sharing and C L Ts that allow C L Ts to maintain equity for subsequent sales to qualifying households. Four, instruct County Council to prepare the necessary final documents for the ordinance on return to the board for consideration. We further move that the Board of Supervisors direct the regional, Director of Regional Planning to take the following actions. Study the feasibility of requiring that affordable replacement units are not subject to the inclusionary housing ordinance but comparable to the market-rate units in terms of unit square footage, number of bedrooms, number of bathrooms, location and access to amenities, and exterior and interior finishes, and quality of construction whether the replacement units are located onsite or offsite. Two, study the feasibility of requiring that affordable set-aside units be comparable to market-rate units in terms of unit square footage and number of bathrooms in the inclusionary housing ordinance. Three, report back on the above items in conjunction with the comprehensive update to the economic feasibility study for the inclusionary housing ordinance within two years of adoption of the inclusionary housing ordinance with applicable amendments as appropriate. And four, to continue to work with the county, Los Angeles County Department Authority Development, I'm sorry, Development Authority, to collect information on projects and to provide deeper levels of affordability and/or more affordable units than required to inform the development of future housing policies and promote accurate accounting of affordable units. And five, consider adding a program in the housing element update to research deeply low-income D I L and the feasibility of defining a local program for D L I, including practical availability of funding for qualifying projects. And we finally move that the Board of Supervisors direct the Chief Executive Office Legislative Affairs, Intergovernmental Relations Division to sponsor legislation in 2021 to define D L I in state housing laws at fifteen percent area median income A M I or lower. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Kewell and Supervisor Ridley Thomas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, you know, sometimes it's very hard to get really excited when we adopt ordinances, but I think these two are the culmination of a very, very useful and, I think, laudable approach to the twin crises faced by L A County. We have an affordable housing crisis, and we have a homelessness crisis. In recent years, we've taken a critical role in the preservation and production of more housing, particularly affordable quality housing for our residents and communities. And in the last few years, just to recap, we've undertaken work on ordinances that require new projects to set aside units for affordable housing, encourage the development of housing that is critical to ending homelessness, preserving the supply of lower-cost housing to avoid the loss of affordable units due to new development, streamlining multifamily residential developments by right in certain zones where appropriate to help increase housing production, providing affordable home ownership through the allowance of smaller lots in areas where infill development is encouraged, allowing for accessory dwelling units, also called granny flats or backyard homes, to provide an additional source of new housing units, and providing low-income housing through density and other zoning initiatives. These were big undertakings, all meant to work together. So today, we're moving forward on several of these efforts, the Affordable Housing Preservation Ordinance, the interim and supportive housing ordinance, and the inclusionary housing ordinance. Each one of these will contribute to expanding affordable housing available to residents. We know, as each of us has said so many times, the solution to homelessness is homes, and our action today will help to reduce the number of people falling into homelessness each day. I want to thank all of the advocacy organizations, all of the individuals and the agencies that have participated in the development and advancement of all the ordinances and efforts here, and thank you all for your contributions. Everyone involved in developing these measures should be proud of the outcomes so far. I want to particularly thank Director Amy Bodick and her incredible staff, because they have put in amazing and tireless work in bringing these initiatives to fruition, and also, of course, express my appreciation in advance for all the work they're going to do to implement all of these efforts going forward. So thanks to all of you. Thanks to my colleagues for seeing the necessity for this, and I look forward to what these ordinances can help to develop for the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Shout out to Amy Bodick, Amy Bodick, Amy Bodick, and her team at the Department of Regional Planning. In light of a shortage of over a half million affordable units across the county, we know we just can't build our way out of this crisis. And so, over the past few years, the department has led what we now appreciate to be a comprehensive and sweeping update of our affordable housing-related ordinances, to not just make it easier to build housing, but to preserve the affordable units that do exist. So this ordinance is a critical tool in our arsenal to create long-term stability in our housing market, which has to be viewed as fundamentally important and factually, it's crucial. So we know that there are tens of thousands of units that are naturally occurring affordable, and these are not units we can afford to lose. So I again want to thank Regional Planning, County Council, and all the stakeholders who have contributed to the drafting of this ordinance and to the other affordable housing-related ordinances for their thoughtful and timely, and I want to say, critical efforts. It all matters. It all adds up. It's critically important, and I do think Supervisor Kewell, the fact that we are excited about ordinances does reflect on our state of consciousness. Nonetheless, we carry on. Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak and to quip.
Thank you, Supervisor Ridley Thomas. And I also want to thank our amazing planning director, Amy Bodick, and her team for bringing up, bringing this ordinance forward. Year after year, two things seem to remain constant. Housing in Los Angeles County becomes more expensive, and our population of persons experiencing homelessness increases. This year as chair, I asked the county to really take a careful look at our existing policies and efforts to see how we could build more housing to meet our need. As I've made clear before, I see a strong connection between our inability to build new housing and the current affordability crisis. However, I understand that there are other strategies we can implement to preserve affordable housing when it already exists. In 2018, the board approved the creation of four new ordinances that we are now seeing before us. I appreciate how difficult this task has been and commend the team for trying to balance all of the different requests placed on them. However, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that we are creating a very large regulatory structure, and that it's absolutely critical that these ordinances work together. These ordinances are complicated and have a number of divisions, and almost work cohesively, and-